For October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I'm Duncan Berry, I'm the Chair. This meeting is being held in person, and if there's anybody who's online that would like doing the go-to-meeting thing, and you want to speak to the public, we don't see anybody, so if you're listening, you have to get down here and the clock is ticking.
I think you have to start.
According to Mass General Law, anybody that wants to record this meeting has to speak, address the Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I don't have anything to say like that. I think we have to start this session.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not to discount yours.
Oh, that's a good one. I like that. That is really, that makes me feel so much better. You know, my daughter laughed at me for like tapping a screen, I'm like, how dare you?
Are we recording?
Yes.
We are.
Are we recording?
And that was on live, so.
Okay, so were they, do we have to start this over again? Let me just start from the top. Ladies and gentlemen, drum roll. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting of October fifteenth. My name is Duncan Berry, I'm the Chair. This is being held in person. If anybody's online wants to address, or has an urgent matter to address the board, please, and to the public, please come on down, be in person. Anyone who intends to record the meeting must notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees. I do not have a flag in the room, so I think we are going to pass over the Fledge of Allegiance this evening, and go straight to the public hearing portion of the, of the agenda. So we start off with case PB twenty twenty-four, yeah?
Actually, Mr. Chair, you can start off with.
Oh, we wanted to start with the, the meeting.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, I'm sorry, that's right. We're starting off the public meeting, third item on the agenda, apologies. The applicant to case number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, ninety-nine Queen Anne Road, approval not required, A N R, is seeking an extension to continue review from September tenth to September twenty-fourth, and now would like to go to November twelfth. This is owner Richard S. Welch, who authorizes Mid-Cape Church Homes Inc. through their agent, John Bologna, Tygeon Bond, seeking endorsement of a two-lot approval not required plan titled Land Division Plan Project Mid-Cape Church Homes, situated in Harwich, Mass., dated April fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, prepared by John McElwee, number three-three-six-zero-two P L S, Tygeon Bond pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter eighty-one P, and Section four-hundred dash nine of the Code of the Town of Harwich for property located ninety-nine Queen Anne Road, map fifty-seven, parcel H one. Parcels in the residential low-density R L and industrial limited zoning districts. So I think we're looking for a motion to extend the, or to continue the case until November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, a town note later than six-thirty PM. I'd like to entertain that motion.
Make a motion to, for an extension, Christine, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, for extension of the case?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries on.
I'm just gonna abstain, Duncan.
Beg your pardon?
I'm gonna abstain because I don't know that I was involved in all of that.
Okay, so we have four to one with one extension, four affirmative, one abstention.
Thank you.
We are now also back to public hearing, the continued public hearing from August twentieth and September tenth. This is applicant require, request to continue public hearing to October eighth. Public hearing administratively was continued by me at the request to withdraw without prejudice for a full refund. This is case number PB twenty twenty-four dash twenty, John F. Connell, Jr., manager of seventy-three Main Street LLC, through his agent J. Thaddeus Eldridge, P L S of Southeast, East Southeast LLC, requesting a site plan review and special permit to add a second multifamily dwelling to the property, along with the utility upgrades and exterior accommodations. This application is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven, and the Harwich zoning bylaw Sections three-twenty-five dash fifty-five and three-twenty-five dash fifty-one Q. Properties located seventy-three Route twenty-eight, Route ten, parcel W one, in West Harwich Special District, and the commercial Highway one, C H one, residential high-density R H dash one zoning districts. Did you want to comment on the conditions that we were discussing prior?
Sure. The applicant did ask for a full refund, and I have made a request to administration because I'm not exactly sure what the town policy is on refund, so if we can at least make a motion for the withdrawal, and with the caveat that staff will follow up regarding the refund question, the request for a full refund.
Great.
We have done it from time to time, it depend, it was a case-by-case basis, though, as I recall. And Alan is probably nodding that he's agreeing with me. I think it depended on how far we got into the review and what the circumstances were.
We only have, the, our, actually, our engineer found an issue with the property and notified the applicant, and so it was the applicant taking the information from our consulting engineer to make the decision to withdraw without prejudice. But beyond that, we didn't get too, too far into the process.
So is there a protocol that we want to?
I think that we.
We've also done it where we've allowed them to reapply within a year and, and for no fee and not refunded. I think we've done a few different things.
Yeah, so do we just want to, is there like a procedural?
I think it's whatever the pleasure the board is at this point, and if you're uncomfortable refunding, then I would say you could continue.
Well, if they, if they're going to reapply, right, which is the idea, why don't we just hold it, you know, they've already paid it.
Yeah.
So let's come back within a twenty, what is it, twelve months to the fifteenth of October, two thousand and twenty-five? Does that make any sense?
If they still don't want it then, then it can be.
Right, then we can cover chat.
Okay. I may come up with that myself.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
So I make, I make a motion that we approve the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. However, we will, rather than a full refund, we will hold the filing fees in abeyance for a reapplication for twelve months. And if the applicant reapplies in twelve months, then, then they'll have the fees.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Five-zero unanimous. Now we come to the continued public hearing from September tenth and September twenty-fourth, case number PB twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. Owners Lewis J. Semenaro, Jr., and J. Bruce McGregor, general partner, J. B. M. Family Limited Partnership, have authorized Eastward Companies through its agent Susan Ledoux to seek approval of an eight-lots definitive subdivision plan on two parcels of land. The application is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one K through G G, and the Code of the Town, Harwich, Chapter four hundred, Article two. Properties located at fifteen ninety-four and fifteen ninety-eight Orleans Road, S S map one oh seven, parcels S two dash one and S two dash two, and residential rural R R zoning district, and the Zone Two Water Resource, Drinking Water Resource Protection District, D W R P D. So, I see you're here, Susan. Your team is here, or?
Can you hear me out there?
Yes, loud and clear.
Susan has the task of the presentation.
Okay. That's what the sign is for, that gets you out of?
Just to arouse sympathy from you.
Okay, very good, excellent. Susan, please go ahead.
Thank you. Susan Ledoux from Eastward Companies. We're here tonight, we're returning, and I believe at our first hearing, you were waiting to hear, you had the report from the engineer, but you didn't want to hear from them, and so you had that, and then there was a site meeting. And I believe a couple of members attended that with Don Quinott from our office. So we responded to the report of the, of the H P, the towns engineer, and I believe at this point, we've responded to all items. As of this morning, there was one outstanding question, and we addressed that, and I sent that to Christine this afternoon, and Justin Ramor, our engineer, corrected that sheet, and I believe that was all, all that we were, were completing in order to wrap up our hearing with the board. And that's my presentation. Unless you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine, did you want to?
Yeah, just as a quick overview, again, this is property, map parcel, the location at fifteen ninety-four and fifteen ninety-eight Orleans Road, eight thirty-nine, location in map oh seven, parcels S two one and S two dash two. The zoning districts are the residential rural estate and the Zone Two Drinking Water Resource Protection District. And this is a, an eight, an eight-lot definitive subdivision plan where the, with two additional lots, non-buildable lots, lots ten and nine, and the application has met all of the minimum zoning requirements under the subdivision control law for forty thousand square feet minimum acreage, as well as a hundred and fifty-foot frontage. And you'll note in the revised staff report that they have addressed the engineer, the issues that were raised under B H P's initial and second review, which are also in your packet. And today Susan did send a revised part of their site plan that, that addressed this, the sidewalk length from five to four feet, and so they did make a note of that on their site plan. And we did receive twenty letters from members of the public in opposition to the project, raising concerns of community character, environmental impact, as well as visual impact from the road, and some safety issues. And I've laid in your, laid out in your packet options if, if the board is ready to close the public hearing and to set out some options for possible votes for approval, approval of conditions or a denial.
Very good, thank you so much. Were there any other comments from the applicant?
I have none, Duncan.
Okay. I'd like to open up to the public. I see we have a couple people who would like to address, so please step up to the table and introduce yourself with your address, and we will entertain.
Yes, thank you, Patrick Otten, East Harwich. So I know Eastward has every right to build and construct and provide housing in Harwich. I just want to emphasize that the subdivision is in a residential rural zoning district, and Harwich's town character is a small town with nestled within the green of nature. Harwich is not an urban, suburban, commercialized metropolitan setting, it is a country setting. My most concern with the development is the environmental impact, loss of nature's woodlands, you know, clear-cutting trees, trees are important, trees actually add value to property. Trees lower the energy costs. Trees help with storm runoff by absorbing the water. Trees act as a buffer zone between neighbors. Trees are a biological resource for critical host plants needed by Cape's wildlife. Trees are also an aesthetic pleasure. Fertilizers and pesticides applied to non-native turf grass is a second source of pollutants contributing to decline of our ponds, seashore, and estuaries. What was once green leave covered and now impenetrable surfaces of roofs, driveways, and roadways, all contributing to storm runoff. But stormwater runoff is also a, well, turf grass also contributes to stormwater runoff, and stormwater runoff is the third contributor of pollutants to our sole-source aquifer with, of chemicals of emerging concern. I know that Eastward's applicant will be approved, but can Eastward plans proceed with a sensitivity to Harwich town values of character and minimizing the impact of loss of nature? Can we ask Eastward to be sensitive to Harwich's small-town atmosphere? Build architecture that is congruent with nature's, with Harwich's town character? Let's ask Eastward to be sensitive to the natural environment of Cape Cod. Minimize clear-cutting, Cape Cod lawns, no irrigation, no pesticides, no fertilizers, and replant only with native species. I don't know if the planning board has any influence on setting parameters on what can and can't be done, but those are my asks. I think it's very important that we pay attention to our environment. The Cape is suffering throughout the Cape with environmental problems. Our seashores are in eighty percent decline, our ponds are in sixty percent decline. We need to pay attention to where we live, and I hope that Eastward will also be sensitive to our environment and, and, and take that into their actions. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Otten, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. I see Mr. Sutton. I know you have something for us to read, but we'd love to hear your presentation or synopsis, or read the whole thing as you wish.
I'm not going to read it, it's, but I've taken this opportunity to drop in here and give you copies of what I sent to the selectmen.
Great.
You probably have all read this, but I figured I'd make sure how I feel.
Well, why don't you take the opportunity to tell us, if you'd like, I mean, we're all ears, we're all here right now, and you're here, and nothing like the present, right?
I'm not here to speak about Eastward. We, everybody knows what Eastward's M O is and how they choose to develop. I'm thinking beyond that. I, I spent twenty years in Westchester building, and I've seen all of Eastward's type of work twenty years ago, and it just moves out and out and out, out of New York. And the problem is that here on Cape Cod, it can only go to the water's edge. It's finite ground. So I, I see a challenge before most Cape towns, which is, do they really want to build everything up and clear the trees and basically take away the Cape Cod that, that I've known for seventy years? And my sense is that the status quo is so appreciated that most people are just going to let that happen. And I've gotten, in the last year, more focused on how problematic that is for me. I have the luxury of carving out a lot of land for privacy, and, you know, I don't have this anxiety personally, but I do feel it for others. So what I'm here to voice is, I think my intention going forward to ask the town to consider a moratorium on subdivisions for a year, with the idea that it's time for the town to catch up with zoning regulations that would make it easier for people to live in town and build equity, as opposed to what's going on before everybody right now, which is this Pine Oaks mega concept of, I think, four hundred and fifty beds, nine hundred cars, whatever. Reminds me when I used to commute to Manhattan, going, seeing all these monster buildings that people lived in off, off of ninety-five. It doesn't seem like the right way, it doesn't seem like the way any of us wants to go. But we seem to be letting it happen, and I'm particularly miffed by the fact that this local group who is pushing for Pine Oaks is pushing a forty B on their neighbors. Now, it's one thing, you always figure somebody from out of town is going to come buy some land and push a forty B down your throat, but I find this particularly irksome that our neighbors are attempting to push a forty B down our throats. And, you know, maybe it's a strategy, ask for four hundred and fifty beds and settle for two hundred. I don't know what their agenda is, but that might be what it is. Still, if that is what it is, it does not solve the problem, which is, it's reconciling a certain number of people to a rental situation to service our needs, and have, and they'll have a hard time building their own equity. So the only way they're going to build some equity is if they have an opportunity fee simple in town somewhere. And that's where I'm hoping that this board will consider all the ways that Eastward and other companies could make money, taking all of the fifties and sixties single-story rectangles and putting a second story on them, and letting somebody who's had a challenge to own the property, an elderly woman, man, have a rental income, expand their equity, gets paid down over time, they die, they leave it to their kids, their kids have a, you know, kind of a cash cow. And everybody is served by that because you're not, you're building off an existing footprint. Loads of these houses, and I have, and, but little data I've been able to accumulate is that in this town, about, I think, forty-two percent of them don't hold a mortgage. So that just makes it easier to happen. Local banks and Pine Oaks could certainly get together and find ways to house people from out of town in not what you call a cattle car.
Right.
And that's, and this is frankly what is going on right now. We've got a, we want a solution for people who aren't here yet so they can service us.
Right.
And that is, and that is, so here, so I'll end this because I know you didn't expect to listen to all this. My intention is to attempt to encourage a moratorium. I'll figure out how to do the paperwork, and I just wanted to give you a notice.
Well, I appreciate it. I thank you for coming to us, and I think, you know, what we hear periodically and more, I should say, more frequently is this concern about zoning issues in the town. And the way to address that is to, you know, through the process that's in place, you know, and the board is open to hearing and advocating and moving things, and I appreciate your input, and thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
It was good to see you again, and thanks for the reading, for the homework tonight.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I also see Mr. Keller here. Do you wish to address the board this evening, or is enjoying the spectacle of the planning board this evening?
I'd like to see the spectacle, thank you.
Okay, no betting, please. Do we have any comments, further comments?
I'd like to address.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
The one name you don't know.
Yes, the one, the name I don't know. Please introduce yourself and what, what part of town?
Ted Nelson, East Harwich, and I'm on the butter, I guess, almost, of that corner. I live on the corner of Pleasant Bay Road and Route thirty-nine. So it's where this kind of stockade fence is on the corner. So over the years, I've been very involved in things involving the town, and I remember Alan being on the planning board during that time, and have a lot of similar concerns as you've heard from your guests this evening. I unfortunately, though, have not been keeping up over all these years to see how the planning in the town has been going in either directions we were heading back then or away from those directions. So I guess my, one of my biggest concerns is this, as I understand, this piece of property is where the, pretty much where the curve is, that messy, messy intersection. I assume you've dealt with all of those safety issues and the problem of access and egress and things like that. What I'm actually concerned about is what does the town plan, what is the town plan, or any thoughts about the property that is behind this property? So from the Charter School to Hall's Path, it's all undeveloped land to this property, so that this property suddenly is kind of opening up, if you will, to that property. And I'm wondering if there are any plans right now for that property, either development plans or plans from the planning department that says we really want to protect that land and, and save it in any way.
Christine, did you want to address this?
My understanding was that the property directly behind this site plan here is that the applicant originally came in to the planning department last year for a preliminary subdivision, and they had to move back the lots because there was a dispute of the owner, of ownership. So that's, at this stage, I think that's being sorted out through Land Court, and I think the applicant can also speak to that as well. But in terms of other planning processes, the town is actually knee-deep in a lot of, many of our planning. We are updating our local comprehensive plan, we are working on our housing production plan, we are also working on our open space and recreation plan, as well as our hazard mitigation plan. So those are also located on our website, and, you know, for other acquisitions, there are processes. I know the town has done a lot of advocacy for conservation, and I know the Conservation Commission has been a significant stakeholder and leader in that. And so we also have partnered with other nonprofits for conservation efforts as well. So I can't speak specifically to the rest of this property beyond that, but the town has, is in the, the process of working on multiple conservation projects.
With that being the case, I'm very happy to hear all that, of course. I guess that would bring up Mr. Sutton's question about putting a moratorium on things until you know what you want to do with all those various departments and plans going on, so that you're not going to have regrets after you put this great plan in place and suddenly property that you were hoping wouldn't be developed has gotten developed. So.
Well, one of our, one of our concerns to that point is that we've been remiss for years in providing these plans to the state, which was, turned it into a bottleneck for state funds to the town. So doing things like having a hazard mitigation plan, as we've seen like in, you know, western, in the Appalachian area and then down forth, like if we don't have these plans, we don't have a mechanism for last resorts, and so we're in the process of, you know, before COVID, we weren't even addressing these things. So we're, we've got to get a few things into place here. But like to, to Mr. Sutton's point, and I think to Patrick's point, is these are regular issues that are coming up in town. The board isn't able to enact or produce legislation, we're simply a regulatory body. The, the, the initiative actually has to be, you know, pushed through, and it's most successful when that effort is done through a public hearing process over time that gets seen by everybody, you get the finance committee behind it, you get the Florida Selectman behind it, all this kind of stuff. It takes a long time, but that is the way to get things through, and that's why the, as the law as it is, we can't change it, we can't interpret, we simply, you know, say, check the boxes, is it, does this fit, does this not fit? So that's where, you know, we'd love to hear this, and this is all part of the feedback, but I think, yeah. Oh, and Mary, thank you.
So I just wanted to say, if you go to the Community Preservation Commission's website, we have a list of all of the open projects and all of the projects that have been put through since its inception. Here is a replacement to land bank, and you will find that every year, the CPC makes a recommendation, and the town, every year, goes with our recommendations to preserve hundreds of acres of land for conservation in open space. So I think if you take a quick look at that website, certainly, you know, we're, we're kind of been all over the gamut with the conversation here. We're, we're really here for a ten-lot subdivision with, with eight houses, and we, we're talking about forty Bs and, and affordable housing actions, but when it comes to conservation, we have certainly done a lot and preserved quite a large number of acres, and very thoughtfully so, with, in conjunction with both the Harwich Conservation Trust and the Harwich Conservation Officer Department and Commission, so that they make sense as well, so that they are parcels that are. they make sense as well, so that they are parcels that are connecting and that are connecting to one another and preserving in the right areas and trying to protect in the right areas. So I just throw that out as a resource for you to take a look. If you haven't followed in the past, say, five to 10 years, there's certainly an update easily found on the website, on the Conservation Commission, on the Conservation Commission and the Community Preservation Commission.
I appreciate that and I appreciate the process. I was intimately involved in that process when we were trying to develop East Harwich as a community center, as a village center. And we were dealing with transfer development rights just for properties like this so that development could be put into the village center area and preserve this sort of open space. And I bring it up only because this application is adjacent to that wonderful piece of property that right now is sitting, looking kind of priceless, I'm sure, for development, also right on the, on the backside of the water department, of course, there as well. So I just wanted to express my concern about all of that and know that we've gone through this process many times and sometimes they failed and even though they had all the support in the world. And I do very much appreciate what's happening on the conservation side and that you're coordinating with the trust and the Conservation Officer. That's all spectacular, so.
Mr. Nelson, thank you for coming this evening. I appreciate your input.
You bet.
Glad to have you back in the.
I'm going to try and get up out of this chair now.
Great. Now, before we close the public hearing, I see there are two people online, John Carey and Roy T. Speak up or forever hold your peace. If you're muted and stay muted, again, I assume you're here for the entertainment purposes.
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carey?
Yeah, I have no comment either.
Thank you. All right, so I, do we have any further comments from the board? Oh, Patrick, yeah.
I just want to follow up on a question that Ted asked and you are able to answer it as well, so maybe you could. The actual cul-de-sac road they're putting in will provide access to the property that you're referring to. Because of the impasse coming down Hall's Path, this is now the inroad for this area to be developed and that's the intention here.
Good.
Just passing that on.
Right, thank you.
So that's in the public air. And that was quoting Diane Ledoux.
Susan.
Susan.
Right. Okay. So, again, comments from the board? Any questions for the town or for the applicant?
I have a question without the paperwork in front of me. These two lots that are unbuildable, aren't they at the far end?
Yes.
So that is the far end that we're talking about, the access to potentially this land, correct? And it is still recommended that is going to be cul-de-sac? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the HPP, one of the issues that they had was the turning radius and they wanted to remove.
Move the island.
The island and, yeah. And so that and the stormwater, they solved the.
All those.
Questions that were pending.
Actually, if I may.
Yes.
The removal of the island was a recommendation from the highway department.
The highway department, okay.
For maintenance of the roads.
So to this point about access to this other piece of land, it is not the board's purview to do anything about that or have any comment related to this case?
Right. It's.
It's not before us.
It's not before us.
It's not before us. We're talking about something we can't take an action on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Just clarification.
Any other questions?
Just for a point of order, I'm non-voting on this.
Non-voting, okay. All right, well, Alan, Alan, anything? All right. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. So I think we're at a situation now where we have to decide on our options for taking a vote and I think our development officer has laid out the three options we have at the back. Mary, are there any considerations you think we ought to take into?
Well, I don't think, I'm, I'm not voting.
I know, but it's not as a voting there, but it's simply as a member, like with your experience, would you?
So, I mean, I'm happy to give my two cents worth.
That's what I'm asking for.
I think Christine, as our town planner, has pointed out that they meet all the requirements for, for the application before us. So to me, that tells us what we need to know.
Okay.
In our staff report.
So then let's do a, I would like to hear a vote or a motion for findings of fact, if I may.
Alan?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion for the findings of fact, the definitive subdivision for case PB 2024-21.
Page seven, Alan.
Yes.
Page seven.
One, said subdivision for residential use, uses is permitted in the rural residential estate, RR zoning district and the Zone 2 drinking water resource protection district. Two, the subdivision requirements have been met and therefore said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all eight subdivision lots demonstrate compliance with minimum dimensional requirements for frontage, area and shape. Lots nine and 10 are not buildable as noted on the site plan. Four, border health requirements shall be met. Five, all necessary drainage and stormwater requirements, local, state and federal, shall be met.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous, four to zero. So we are now at a point of having to decide what our options are, A, B or C. Of course, I think it's. What's the word?
What is, I would say the top of page eight, A, B.
I agree.
To approve with conditions. To approve with conditions, okay, yeah.
Emily, would you like to make the motion?
No, it's all Alan.
Oh, come on.
It's all Alan. Go Alan.
For B, right?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions, case PB 2024-21, owners Lewis J. Semenara Jr. and J. Bruce McGregor, General Partner, JBM Family Limited Partnership, Easter Companies, through its agent Susan Ledoux, for an eight-lot grid definitive subdivision plan, subdivision plan on two parcels of land. The application pursuant to.
Excuse me, are we, eight lot or 10 lot?
It's eight, eight lots with two non-buildable lots.
Okay, so.
So 10, sorry.
So let's, let's just make sure it's 10.
I'd like to amend the motion for a 10-lot grid definitive subdivision plan.
Yep.
On two parcels of land. The application is pursuant to MGL, Master General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81K-GG, and Code of the Town of Harwich, Chapter 400, Article 2. The property is located at 1594 and 1598 Orleans Road, Accession Map 107, Parcels S2-1 and S2-2, in the residential rural RR zoning district, in Zone 2 Drinking Water Resource Protection District, DWRPD, as shown on the plan entitled Proposed Definitive Subdivision 1594-1598 Orleans Road, Harwich, Mass., dated August 5th, 2024, by Strong Tree Engineering, Justin J. Landrow, Landrow, Professional Engineer, Number 47377, Sheet Number C-5. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the plan meets the necessary requirements for approval and endorsement with the following conditions. One, the board of health conditions shall be met, board of health conditions shall be met. Two, projects shall be on town, water and sewer. Three, the road named Ledoux Landing shall be so noted on the revised site plan prior to endorsement. Four, any minor revisions to the site plan as recommended by the town's consulting engineer shall be approved by the town's consulting engineer prior to filing a decision with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds. Five, the waiver requested for 40-foot width right-of-way for the road shall be granted by the board. Six, all drainage and stormwater requirements, local, state and federal, shall be met and approved by the town's consulting engineer prior to the commencement of construction operations. Seven, a standard planning board covenant agreement shall be executed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, is it worth saying that it is, that the subdivision shall consist of eight buildable lots and two non-buildable lots?
Yes.
So I would, I would suggest adding that as.
Number eight.
As number eight. And then I would also add in that it does need to be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Did I see that anywhere?
Yep.
Yep.
Forward.
So that'll be item number nine.
Yeah.
So item number eight.
Is eight plus two.
The subdivision shall consist of.
The subdivision shall consist, shall consist of eight buildable lots and two non-buildable lots. And number nine.
Should we file with the board?
The, the decision shall be filed with the Barnstable County Registry.
The decision shall be filed with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds.
Okay, so amended. Do we need to vote on the amendment before we have?
Just have to agree to the second, to the amendment.
You agree?
Agreed.
Okay, okay.
I agree.
All right, so any further discussion? Motion and second? Any other conditions, concerns? Time for a vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Four, four to zero passes, okay.
Thank you very much, Duncan.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Susan.
Seven to nine.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
And that takes us to planner update. We don't have minutes. We shall have them on the 22nd, I am told. Is it 22nd or 21st?
22nd.
22nd.
Yes.
And so we have an update this evening about the draft housing production hearings for that.
Yes, we have a public hearing for the draft housing production plan, so that will be next Tuesday at 6:30. And after that, we do have some other housekeeping matters. We did receive a filing for an A and R as well as a covenant release, so, and the meeting and meeting minutes, which I realize I'm behind on, so we will, I will have several sets for your review in preparation for next week. So I, I do, we did post the public hearing for the HPP, so if any of you have any questions for Karen or any other thoughts or any members of the public that would like to come.
Was there a meeting on Monday or was it last Monday of a, a public meeting for one of the plans? Because I think I had something in my, my calendar for like at 10 a.m. on Monday or something like that now.
I don't believe so.
Thank you. Good to see Patrick. Good to see Matt. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for listening.
Our pleasure.
So anyway, if any, I don't, I don't recall. We have.
Okay. Because I was just feeling guilty that I'd missed.
No, no, I have, we have put some of the hazard mitigation and open space meeting, committee meetings on the planning department's page, so there may have been some, I, we have posted those meetings on the, on the website. So there might be some confusion relative to the meetings because we are trying to, last week, we did have a local comprehensive planning committee meeting, so.
Okay, all right, that was.
That may have been it.
I know I saw something there, all right.
There are a lot of plans in play that you're trying to get done quickly.
Right.
Yes, we are.
I hope I represented that satisfactorily.
Oh, no, you both did, so thank you very much. I thought you did an excellent job.
And just to confirm, the, kind of the pot of gold at the end of this rainbow with all the plans in place, is then Harwich is eligible for funds that they're not eligible for now? Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's one incentive for doing all of the plans. The other is really to hopefully give you all the good work and support that Harwich Department has been doing thus far, particularly for the, you know, whether it's the Open Space and Recreation Plan, to lend support to the harbors, to parks and recreation, to the Council on Aging, the community center, the 204 building, because all of these facilities are being used in some capacity for members of the community. And it's, and it's really, really, I have to say it again, and I say it all the time, but just within my ear of being here, it's incredibly impressive how much Harwich has, has to offer its citizens and how much work and dedication has gone into supporting a lot of these projects and programs, so, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you. Do we have any other? Yes.
I just want to make one point.
Please.
It's not that we haven't had any of these plans.
No.
We have these plans.
No.
Some of them expired without, without.
Right.
Having probably sufficient steady staff to, to be able to.
Right.
To shepherd them through. And then sometimes, even though you put a plan in place, circumstances are such that you simply just, some of your goals don't come to fruition.
Right.
So, you know, that, I think, and I think that was partially true with the housing production plan with, we certainly didn't hit the numbers that we had hoped to hit, but also, you know, some of the motel hotel conversions, it was a, a goal, just starting to happen, but they're really, really more for J1s as opposed to.
Right.
Being originally for full housing. So things like that happened over the course of the years. It's why we have to update them.
And there are macroeconomic changes, real estate costs.
Exactly, exactly.
Building material costs, interest rates.
Yep.
And then things like COVID.
And they're not.
But, but in like 2018, none of that was on the board and we were behind the eight ball then, so that was, you know, over five years ago. That's why.
And there's, there's, sometimes those things are just out of your control.
Right.
To some degree. So, you know, I, I don't want to leave the public thinking that we didn't have them in place. We did have them in place. We, you know, we were, I think I was on the planning board with Alan when, when the housing production plan and the last open space and recreation plan were done.
And they're done every five to 10 years.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, and we had had the hazard mitigation plan, I'm sure that timed out as well, but, you know, that, that was in place when, you know, not that long ago, as I recall.
But John Ideman wanted to get going on it and Paul Haukiota said this on his checklist, so this has been a while.
And they're not.
I'm not saying that it's bad, I'm just saying, we're playing catch-up.
But it's also not, you know, a local comprehensive plan isn't something that you can have, that can happen overnight, right? And, and that's the, you know, we were looking for funding, we finally got funding, we needed to, to get going with it. So it's wonderful, all the work that Christine has done to get us up and get us moving on this because it has been a long time coming, but, but it's coming, so.
Just a comment, since that season's going to start again, so capital outlay is going to start again, which directly goes into these plans because it's part of this funding source. It's this five-year look. So it's the, you know, the public is challenging us with, you know, what is, should be updated and what's not. That's the funding look, too, that I don't know whether it gets driven across or people understand. And like when you mentioned the harbors, it's going to be big numbers.
Right.
Coming for some of these things. So I think sometimes our work is in pieces and parts.
Mm-hmm.
And it isn't like knit together.
Right.
So that anything can be seen. And this is my second or third year on, on capital outlay, so it's, I feel responsible to say, that's got to come back because there's going to be these big numbers going to come through, right? That relate to open space, all of these other things. So I don't know how we do it, but knitting that conversation together would be really helpful for everybody.
We, we have for the hazard mitigation plan and the open space and recreation plan because clearly the harbor is a huge asset and I think for some of the ongoing maintenance, but also.
Oh, no, the big, big capital improvements coming out, so, yes.
We just did big capital improvements.
Oh, no, no, these are the next one.
On the harbor as well.
But the harbor, the bulkhead timed out. It was 10 years ago for the big harbor, right?
It, well, it, the, the new harbor is in 10 years.
Yes, it is. It started 2014. Sacquetucket is 2014. Because I asked this to them.
Well, they didn't put the, they started doing some of the work. Oh, but I don't think it's, I don't think the construction started until.
I don't think it was funded until like 2016 or 2017.
It was more of an advisory, like committee, like, let's get, let's throw stuff up on the wall and see what.
Right, because I think, I think it got funding in 17 or 18 would be my guess.
I think it was earlier, early than that. The reason I bring it up is there's a huge, big ticket that's coming forward for it on, to harbors, right? So the public is challenging us about open space and whatever else. I don't know how we communicate better that to protect those things, there are going to be big numbers coming, rolling at the.
Right.
Town, right? We've seen them like on the horizon, they're now that much closer in.
Open space and recreation isn't just trees.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly.
And unbuilt parcels, it's also harbors and things of that sort. But I think, too, for those people watching, I think those of us here understand this, but that's why we have a member on the Capital Outlay Committee, such as yourself, and why we have a representative on community preservation, like Emily, so that we have those, those liaisons in place to be able to communicate back and forth from those committees back here and from here to those committees. So, you know, we tend to forget about that sometimes. And I think the public doesn't know about that all the time either.
Yeah, so any suggestions for how to do that better as these things start rolling forward, whether it's the CPC or Capital Outlay, please throw it out, because it's always something with a big ticket that people are shocked at.
Right, and it blows up, and it's in the newspaper after two years of discussion, and boom, like, what the heck?
Right, you know, because I did the tour of, you know, the bulkhead, and they knew it was going to start to fail. They know it, you know, and the jetty, they know it. Again, those are environmental concerns. So we tend to spend stuff on the little stuff and forget the, the big, like CPC, we go buy some.
I was going to say, we can, I mean, it's getting to, we're just kicking off CPC season, really, because all of the applications came in at the beginning of the month. So we can do it, and Mary's on the committee as well. We can bring forward updates on a more regular basis, just to continue to reinforce the things that are happening. Because like Mary said before, there's, there's a lot that's happening.
This is a good part of our discussion here at the end. It's just, even for a minute or two, it's like, hey, red flag, this came up in the last meeting, and just keep your eyes on it. So appreciate all of this.
Well, like, your suggestion to go ask for funding, they could do an application, right, is that deadline passed, these kind of things?
Yes.
How do we connect the dots better?
It's October 1st. It's always October 1st. And we put it out there, we have a public hearing in, usually June, for, which is a mandated public hearing that we advertise, and we do what we can to drum up support. And Emily is, is taking the lead on our social media and kind of outreach as well. So there'll be more and more of it, but...
What's it going rate for a bulkhead?
10 million.
10?
It was about, it was about eight.
Oh, you're kidding, really?
It's probably close.
Probably 10.
Do I hear 12?
Every time you put it off, right, it goes up, and then it's...
I was just curious.
It depends on the size of it, right, how big it is and where it is, and...
Well, and from the environment point, the jetties are falling apart, and so it's who owns the jetties and how are we going to fix them. Allen Harbor can close up if you don't fix the jetty that's been failing for a number of years, right? So it's just, it's just a matter of how you bring it forward, and we don't get sidelined on the trees in a subdivision, which are important, too.
Right. We want to see the forest and the trees.
Forest and the trees, kind of.
But the other, the other point with the jetties, too, is they're not easy to fix, because we on CPC have had an application before us for, I want to say it's on its third year, to fix the backside of the jetty at Red River Beach, because the parking lot is, is collapsing in, and...
Oh, my gosh, is that why it's been closed off?
And Amy has, has repeatedly tried to get, to get permitting done to do a revetment in there, and I don't think she's had success.
Well, that should be...
Yeah, I'm hoping she may have another one, may have success this time around, but that's been a few days.
Yeah, but I can look for that now and see if it's in the packet that I'm going to get in next week.
Because she had come for CPC money for, for open space and recreation funding.
But it could be capital, it could be a capital outlay expense, right? But it's, you never know, right, one or the other. And then, just to be really transparent, nobody's sure who really owns the jetties.
Really?
Really, because they were the...
They were probably put in...
Corps of Engineer.
Right, Army Corps of Engineer, right.
And so it's not clear whose they are. So that just wants to make it more complicated.
Right.
They'll be our problems. It will not be the Army Corps of Engineers that's going to take on ownership.
They're gone.
We'll sell it to you for a buck. There you go.
Ding ding.
Pretty much.
Just like all those county roads. There's a reason why the county roads aren't county roads anymore.
Just like, just like the bridges.
The bridges, exactly, exactly. Anyway, I will try to do a better job bringing that forward about what's coming. Some of those big projects were, you know, on the five-year horizon. They're now in the next two years. So, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. Any other business for the board? I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you all.
It's the only thing I voted on tonight.
You can vote on that.
I think we're making progress with the people who are asking questions to us.
Well, I like the fact that we're becoming kind of a clearinghouse for people that are having considerations of public interest, and...